Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the inaugural years of the 2019-2022 City Council. If you are able, I would ask you to stand.
I don't know, I'll go check just a minute. Dan? You getting audio from the board now?
We will now call upon the healing lodge singers, who are going to sing the welcome song.
The audio is on.
Please be seated. Mr. Mayor-elect, before we get to the formal part of the throne, the Declaration of Offices, we need to wish to give a special guest the conference.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Most of you who have either watched frequently or visited this chamber frequently recognize that coat of arms behind me is significantly different and changed. I want to recognize the heralded artist who created the original artistic rendition who is here with us today, Eva Piller-Cott. I would like to explain the coat of arms so we all understand it. Coat of Arms is the official symbol of the city with an elevated status that sets it apart from other elements of the city's visual identity. As a heraldic device, it is intended for ceremonial applications only. The arms are in the colors of the city, and the background of the design makes reference to the Sauric lock gates of Sault Ste. Marie now. You will note two white, you will note tea-white chevrons going upwards, one above the other, with a white fish above and a white lily flower below. The shape refers to the narrowing of the passage of water through the locks, but it also resembles the cross-section of a steel girder, an allusion to the steel industry that is an important part of our city's history. The white fish is a fish that is a Sauric cousin, the siurapids, and the lily is a symbol of Saint Mary, therefore referenced the city's name and its heritage. The clerked blockhouse is set in place by a wreath of twisted cloth and golden blue. The blockhouse is a distinctive local building and one of the oldest in our city. Originally a fruit trade structure used by the Northwest Company, it was acquired and expanded by Francis H. Clerk, American industrialists developed his industrial base in the 1890s. On either side of the shield is an eastern or timber wolf, a powerful local animal known for its gregarious, depicted in its natural gray color. They stand on a base of pine branches and gold maple leaves placed on whites and blue ways. The base marks the significance of the local forestry industry with the white cap ways as a reference to the siurapids. The maple leaves indicate the city's identity as a Canadian border municipality, their gold color ties back to those in the coat of arms of Ontario. Each wolf is holding a shaft at the end of which is a hand crucible. The crucibles are tools used by steelworkers to gather wolf into steel. The Ojibwe trade you see on the coat also appears on the original emblem of Sault Ste. Marie. First Nations language experts refer to the phrase "the settlement near the Ojibwe's Big Lake." I understand that Sault Ste. Marie was the first municipality in Canada to incorporate a motto in Ojibwe in its coat of arms, and that we remain the only municipality in Canada to offensive. Thank you to the artists for your great work, the Canadian heraldic authority, and the community of councilmen who worked on this, including former councillors Susan Myers, Nteria Sheen, Sergeant Ray Magnon, and the late Kim Forbes, former curator of the Sioux Museum. I also want to recognize importantly that former Governor General David Johnson approved this coat of arms in 2050. Thank you.
Mayor-elect, I would now ask you to stand and read your Declaration of Office.
I, Christian Robinson, having been elected to the office of mayor, in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and my ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other than proper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with municipal conflicts or individual acts. I will be faithful and bear true loyalty to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing that the same force can affect as it may be.
Mr. Mayor, would you please stand? Councillors-elect, would you please stand? Councillors-elect, I will ask you to state your names, and then to read your declarations of office in unison. Please start, please, Councillor-elect.
I am Archie Bruni.
I am Matthew Schumaker.
I am Senator Hollinsworth.
I am Corey Garry.
I am Mrs. Bell.
I am Matthew Scott.
I am Amy Hulsonner.
I am Ruth D. Ford.
I am Cheryl.
I am Paul Christian.
Having been elected to the office of councillor, order of three, in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do you solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability? I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose to any junior agents throughout our underground in the importance of municipal enforcement of justice as a matter of fact. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise in this declaration, constantly consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is the strength of any force and the better of us in the nation on the road.
Councillors-elect, would you please be seated and sign the Declaration? I would ask everyone, if you're able, to please stand, and I'm going to call upon Sister Mary Salmon for the blessing.
Dear God, you are the giver of all good gifts. Give our mayor and council clear vision, integrity, and wisdom. Grant them the resilience necessary to face difficulties with determination, open-heartedness, and courage. Help them in all ways to serve our city with humility, kindness, and unity of purpose. Amen. In the past couple of weeks, I've come across a beautiful quotation, which I've memorized, but because I'll be nervous, I'll read it, and I think it's something that all take to heart. Do not be dismayed by the brokenness of the world. All things break, and all things can be mended, not with time, as they say, but with contention. So go, luck intentionally, extravagantly, and unconditionally. The broken world waits in darkness for the light that is you.
Mr. Mayor, for 2019 to 2022 Council, it's now your honour.
So, before I begin, Chief, if I could ask you, I think my wife left, so Chloe wouldn't make any noise, but I don't mind Chloe making noise when I speak. I'll just make sure she doesn't make noise when everybody else speaks. So, yeah, please, if you could. For the record, she's making that noise because she's trying to get sleep. So, thank you, Mr. White. I acknowledge and respect that we are in Robinson Huron Treaty Territory, and the land in which we are gathered is traditional territory of the Tsunabi, home of our First Nation, Black Horn, First Nation, and the Maiti Nation. I also acknowledge that this area is a source known as Baoting. I thank Piper Scott McGilvery for plying us in. Piper McGilvery is the brother of Councillor Hollinsworth. I thank the Agoma Festival Choir for the National Anthem, the Healing Lodge Singers for their welcome song, and Sister Mary Salmon for her blessing. I also want to recognize that your Ron Irwin is here with us this afternoon. Ron served our community as a city councillor, a mayor, a member of parliament, and cabinet minister. He served our country as an ambassador and consul general. He is a tremendous friend and a mentor, and I thank him for his unwavering and unconditional support. I will acknowledge and thank all the members of our community who ran to serve on this council. Standing before these offices is a significant challenge. It can be difficult to get through the grind of the campaign to subject yourself to public comment and public criticism, and all of us who participate draw our family and our friends into the process. To my own family and friends, the Kylie and Isla and Chloe, and the little one that will be joining the four of us in the spring, to my parents and to my siblings, to Paula and Tom, all of my aunts and my uncles and my cousins. Everything begins and ends with you. I would like to stand for this office for years ago, for again this year, for all your support. You are my greatest blessing. I'll let you break it to me when I'm done. To Sault Ste. Marie, thank you. I'm humbled and heartened by both the election results and the opportunity to serve as your mayor for another four years. Over the past term, we managed through a very difficult time for our community, while doing so, among other things, we reduced budget to the expenditures, restructured our economic development efforts, began communication for a billion-dollar industrial project, and developed a broad-based community plan, future Sault Ste. Marie. We are now acting on that plan, and I am confident it will help our community create a more stable and vibrant future. However, I think it is important that the community hears me say this: I see, recognize, and understand our community's challenges. I'm committed each and every day to work collaboratively with this council and the community to meet them. The opioid epidemic and the overdose crisis is at the forefront of our concern. The city and Sault Ste. Marie Police Services are in constant communication with and support above the healthcare providers and the frontline workers. We have and will continue to lobby our federal and provincial partners to make the necessary investments to meaningfully address this epidemic. We have demographic challenges from outmigration to aging population, and the need for skilled labor and labor force development. Our employment rate is currently one of the lowest in the province of Ontario, and employers of all size and sector are having a difficult time filling jobs. At the same time, the number of people in our community on social assistance has increased. To many of our residents, remain affected by poverty, food insecurity, and more at risk as the cost of living rises more quickly than our income. We have aging infrastructure and substantial infrastructure deficit, our roads, sewers, bridges, electrical, and all need significant renewal and substantial investment. We are not alone in these challenges. They are challenges that are being faced across our province and our country, but we, as a city council, should take no comfort in the company. I will work every single day of this term to build on the work of last term, to work with our community partners to address the challenges and earn the confidence that gave our community expressed in the year of election day. I will work solely for the betterment of our community at large and consider only its best interests. As the single most important measure, to the newly-elected city councillors, I believe very sincerely that this council has a tremendous opportunity this term, and I'm excited to be here with you. Agoma Steel is now an independent operation with new ownership, and it is on the verge of a substantial capital investment that will give our community an economic boost in the short term. We have solid budgetary policies and processes that we can rely upon and build upon to ensure that we continue the work of the last four years, allocate our community resources responsibly, and minimize municipal burden on our ratepayers and our citizens. Our PUC is headed in a very exciting direction. With our battery storage and smart grid projects, we can become national leaders in energy infrastructure. The home is in the midst of transitioning from being a consumer of power to generating, storing, and consuming its own power. There's no reason why Sault Ste. Marie can't be on the forefront of this development and the technical innovation that will inevitably come with it. Speaking of energy generation and consumption, we can and should have better transit and active transportation systems in our community. We can do a much better job of moving people around our community and giving people safe, non-vehicular transportation options. We can and need to improve City Hall's IT infrastructure. Staff will be delivering a path forward to us, but that path forward will require investment, investment that I believe we need to make. We are in the midst of refocusing on our tourism efforts and working with our tourism partners to build that sector of our economy. We live in a tremendous place, and we can be a tremendous destination. Our downtown can be revitalized quicker than our current efforts allow. Staff will be bringing us plans in this respect also, and we should act on them to accelerate change. This type of investment is precisely the quality of life investment we need to ensure our youth and our young professionals and our tradespeople see a life for themselves here. In future Sault Ste. Marie, we have a team of young professionals in City Hall, collaborating with leaders and citizens across our community, and focus solely on our community's development and its future. Future Sault Ste. Marie can make a difference if we stay committed to it and support its efforts. We have developed, and we will continue to develop, positive relationships with our First Nation partners. We have tremendous First Nation culture and heritage in and around Baoting, and we can become a national leader in truth and reconciliation. We can be a community that others look to, from coast to coast, as an example. I strongly believe that this council has the opportunity to turn all of these cans into wills. If we choose to, if we choose to, we will become an innovative municipality. We will have a modern and effective municipal transit system. We will develop a community-wide active transportation system. We will be a leader, a national leader in truth and reconciliation. We will be a model community for electrical innovation. We will be a tremendous destination. This journey from can to will comes directly through us and is completely dependent on us, the discussions we have, and the decisions we make in this chamber. So, as we begin this term together, as we accept the shared responsibility of governing our community together, I respectfully suggest to you that we be mindful of what I believe are some important truths. These offices are a trust. We hold them with a respect for those who came before us, and with a mind to leave them in a better position for those who come after us. If all of us approach our respective responsibilities in good faith, our common interests will always outweigh and outnumber any of our differences. If we are negative or pessimistic, if we get caught up in the small stuff or in the day-to-day operation of City Hall and manage the corporation by motion, we will simply diminish our own roles and risk squandering the opportunity that is before us. If we look forward, if we're progressive and innovative, our staff will be forward-looking, progressive, and innovative. If our staff is forward-looking, progressive, and innovative, the municipal corporation will be forward-looking, progressive, and innovative. If the municipal corporation is forward-looking, progressive, and innovative, our community will follow. If we are positive and constructive, if we work as a group to elevate the discussion, and we are thoughtful about the broader challenges facing our community and the solutions to address them, we will set an example for our own staff and our community at large. It all begins, it all begins with us. The leadership and direction of our community begins with us, and that leadership and direction carries through our staff to the community at large. Nothing we want to see will happen without our staff. We will get much farther and make much more progress if the discussions we have at this table are respectful of them and their role. To city staff, I want to begin by thanking you for the work of the past four years. We introduced a lot of change, and we met a lot of challenge, and we did so successfully. For my part, I want to acknowledge that none of what we have done or what we will do is possible without you. Many have heard, many of you have heard me say that it is a privilege to come here and work with you every day. It is a privilege to have a job that you can come to every day where your work is to support, improve, and serve the community that many of our family and friends live in and that many of us love. Your work is meaningful, and it is important, and it can make a difference. You can make a difference in your community by simply coming to work and doing your job well. My coworker Lisa is my most ready example. Mayor for a day, every breakfast counts, the community Christmas tree lighting. Think of how positive and important each of these events are for our community. Not one of them would have happened or be what they are without Lisa and those of you who inspired her or joined her in our efforts, like Larry, and Andrea, and Dan, and Andy, and Justin, and Bob, and Jake, and Stephanie. So, to both council and staff together, it is a privilege to work for and serve our community. We have a great opportunity this term, which we will seize, all of us, city council and staff. You can bring her to me, hon. I just really want this last sentence to be heard. I know, I saw her waving at me. So, to both city council and staff. Matt, I can hold your son too. Yeah. Oh, no, that's Luke's son. That's Luke's son. But isn't this fantastic to have all these little kids in the council chambers? It is a privilege to work for and serve our community. We have a great opportunity this term, which we will seize. We will seize, all of us, city council and staff, by working hard, by working together, and by looking forward. I am confident of that, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you. Mr. White, you can proceed with the remainder of our meeting.
Mr. Mayor, it's now the opportunity for the councillors to get their inaugural remarks.
Thank you, Mr. White. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, CEO Mr. Horseman, Ward Four constituents, City of Susie Marie, city staff, and my fellow councillors. I am humbled and honored for my reelection to council and represent Ward Four residents and the City of Susie Marie. It has been written often that municipal level of governance is the closest to the people, and the collective greetings I received from friends and people that I had never met before has demonstrated to me the important role city council plays in the lives of our community. During the campaign, many key issues came forward: minimal tax increases, road improvements, snow removal, reduced taxes on the small and large commercial industrial base, flooding issues in Ward Four, and a good working relationship with council and city staff. I hear you, and I will dedicate the next four years on these issues and other concerns from the residents of Ward Four and the City of Susie Marie. Working with councillor Nero will also be a privilege. I look forward to it. It is very important for councillor Nero and myself to continue a positive, respectful relationship as we proceed the next four years. We've already started working together as we submitted two resolutions and held several meetings with staff and constituents. I would like to also acknowledge and thank Frank Fatta for the past eight years as my co-councillor in Ward Five. I appreciated his honesty and the respect he had shown to me. At times, we did not agree on certain issues, but we always respected each other, and I thank him for that. To become a councillor or any elected position, you may require help, and many people have come forward to help me. It is very important to me to thank those who helped me in my campaign. First, to my wife Rose, you have been beside me for the last eight years as I have been a councillor. Your support and patience has been the glue that has kept our family together. Your understanding for their late suppers or away from a family function was never argued or debated. She understood if I missed something, it was because it was an important meeting or function to attend. She now understands that a project around the house can take another four years to To my son Michael, daughter-in-law Mika, and daughter Angela, I thank you for all your support. You always stood, you always stood beside me when tough decisions were made, and you always supported my decisions. To my mother and my father, who passed away less than two years ago, I will always thank them for instilling the family values into our lives and to always encourage us to pursue our goals. By providing this example to all of us, this has been passed down to all their grandchildren. To my mother-in-law Barbara, you have shown me that sickness does not prohibit you from anything. It shows me you can do anything if you have the support. I thank you for your support and your guidance throughout our lives, and especially in these difficult times that your family has gone through. To my sister and brothers, thank you for all your support, not only on this election, but all your support throughout the years. All of you have come out and helped, which I truly appreciate. I am fortunate and blessed that I have you all in my life. To my brother-in-laws and sister-in-laws, thank you for offering the help any way you can. When I announced I was running, you stepped forward, and I really appreciate it. You know when you're getting over when you have the opportunity to thank your nieces and nephews. Eighteen in total. I just want to thank them for all their help and especially their enthusiasm during the election. I didn't have to place a call for help. You just showed up and said, "What can I do, Uncle Marchy?" It's always a pleasure working with the young, and hopefully someday one of you will follow the same footsteps that I have taken. To my friends, if wealth is measured by friendship, I am a very wealthy person. I thank you for all your support before, during, and after the election. It is very much appreciated and something I will never forget. And finally, I'd like to thank the residents of Ward Four for your support and trust that you have shown in me. Your vote of confidence for me is encouraging, and it will be a privilege and honor to serve you and the City of Susie Marie for the next four years. I will continue to work hard and provide the best service I can to all residents of Ward Four and the rest of Susie Marie. I thank you, and God bless you all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Mr. White, Mr. Horseman. I want to begin by welcoming everyone who is present in council chambers and those watching at home. Tonight is a special night because it's the culmination of a very important part of our democratic process, a process I hope we all appreciate and view as being very special. I want to thank the people in Ward One who voted for me and allowed me to serve you for the next four years. I want to thank my family, my wife Julie, daughters Jenna and Laura for their hard work, love, and support, and especially for being patient when my alter ego emerged during the election, and hopefully we won't see that person for another four years. I want to thank my friends and the volunteers who helped me through the entire campaign. I can't adequately express the gratitude I have for the support you gave me. Everyone around this table knows how difficult it is to let your name stand for elected office. Running an election campaign is virtually impossible without the help of a team, so I thank you, thank you very much. A special thanks to my friend Andre for slugging it out in the trenches with me, building signs, knocking on doors, and giving me hell when I was getting a bit weary, and to Laura, my daughter, who did much the same throughout the campaign. I respect everyone around this council table, and to those who ran and were unsuccessful, and I see a couple of them here. It takes courage and determination to do what you did. I look forward to working with each of you over the next four years as we tackle the challenges and issues facing our city. As I look around, I see a dynamic group of people. We have a healthy balance of veterans and new people who will provide diverse perspectives on issues before this council. For that, I am optimistic and hopeful about our potential, and I do mean hopeful. I think we have a lot going for us, and I'm hopeful for many things. I'm hopeful that this council will render decisions that will advance the future of our community by considering all the issues with an open and progressive mindset. I am hopeful each of us on council will place the welfare of our city above populist politics and personal agendas. I'm hopeful that the community will rally behind the greater cause and that the voices of the negative and cynical are drawn out by those who want and aspire to creating a better community, regardless of the challenges or the setbacks we might encounter along the way. I hope that all in our community understand the importance of being involved. Democracy is a responsibility, not a right. Our city needs people to volunteer for boards and committees. We need people to offer constructive feedback and ideas instead of cynicism and negativity. We need people attending open houses and responding to surveys, online or otherwise. This city can only progress if we recognize that each of us has a role and a responsibility in the process. I hope that our economic development organizations work collaboratively to bring forward ideas and opportunities that will help us diversify our economy. I hope we, as a city, work collaboratively to solve our opioid problem and help those who need us the most. I hope that our people understand that we live in a very competitive world, and in order to grow, we as council and as a community must think big, think creatively, take bold steps, and embrace change. Before I end, I want to offer my help and mentorship to any young person who is interested in pursuing a seat on council four years from now. Our path forward will be paved and led by our youth, so as a teacher, I'm compelled to offer that to the youth of our community. I'm open to help anybody that wants to seek counsel, but I encourage you to do it now. It's not something that you can pursue six months before an election. And finally, I am hopeful that the redevelopment of our downtown and the implementation of the future Susie Marie project will be the genesis of a promising future, one that will instill pride in our city and our citizens. Before I leave, I just want to say hi to my friend Steve Butlin, who I know is watching. I look forward to working with Sandra Hollingsworth. We should have a very productive four years. I do, I don't want to lose the sight of the fact that I am sitting in Steve's seat, and I will try to do my best to serve justice to the seat and the office of Steve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations once again on your reelection. Four years ago, sitting at the end of the horseshoe in a seat that's no longer even there, I noted that our city depended on residents' hard-earned money to function and that I would work hard to save taxpayer money, as hard to save taxpayer money as my constituents worked to earn that money. I repeat that pledge today. This week has been a week of ups and downs in our community. We heard difficult news from our Tube Mill within the same 24 hours as we heard incredible news from Algo Mustil. The economic struggles of the community over the last four years aren't yet over, but I'm confident we are headed in the right direction. As the mayor has said, there is always more work that can be done. As I did last term, I pledged to roll up my sleeves and get to work for the people of Ward Three and the entire city. I must thank all of those in Ward Three who have put their trust in me once again to represent them at City Hall. I must also thank those who made it possible for me to put the work in to get reelected so I could continue to serve the city that I love. I had about 25 volunteers over the course of the campaign, including friends, siblings, nieces, nephews, in-laws, parents, and of course, my wife, who I have more to say about shortly. I thank all of them for the work they put in knocking on doors, placing signs, making calls, dropping flyers, and preparing campaign materials. Obviously, I couldn't have succeeded in this election or in anything else I've accomplished without the help and support of my parents, who I could never thank enough. Four years ago, I joked that my then-fiance had to put our wedding planning on hold during the campaign so that I could knock on every door in Ward Three. This time, I owe that same person, who's now my wife, an even greater debt. In May, my wife and I welcomed our son Hudson, who's sitting over here, and since that time, she has bore more than her share of the parenting responsibilities while I was out campaigning many weeknights and weekends. I simply cannot thank her enough for this. Since Hudson's birth, I view my service to the city through a new lens. This city has given my family everything we have. My mom, an Italian immigrant who came to the sewer for my alo in 1960, in the 1960s, sorry, I've aged her beyond her years, late 1960s. My dad is a Southern Ontario transplant who came to Sue College in the 1970s and has made his career at Algo Mustil since the 80s. My parents met in the late 70s, and all my siblings and I were born in the 80s. I've had the benefit of all that Susie Marie has had to offer throughout my life, including elementary, high school, and undergraduate education. I want that same benefit for my family selfishly and for everyone else's family across the city. That's why I want to serve, and that's why I'm honored to serve. I hope that in four years, our great city is just that much greater, and if I can play even a small role in that, then I've fulfilled my duty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Schumacher. Councillor Dufour? Oh, sorry, Councillor Nero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Were you sitting in that seat before? You were.
Yes.
No.
Two over.
Two over.
Of course. Sorry, Councillor Nero.
No problem whatsoever. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Horseman, Mr. White, let me begin by congratulating you, Mr. Mayor, as well as all the reelected councillors around the table tonight. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you over the next four years. I would like to congratulate and welcome our new members, councillors Vezzo Allen, Dufour, Hill Singer, Gardi, and Scott. I look forward to working with all of you over the next term, and if there's anything I can do to help you during your orientation and going forward, please do not hesitate to ask. Let me also take this opportunity to thank all of our staff for the work that you do. I truly appreciate your prompt responses when I'm looking for information to address issues brought to me by constituents that I represent. I appreciate the work you have done over the past four years, and I look forward to working with you over the next four. Those of us who have been involved in elections realize how much time and work it takes to be successful, and we know how fortunate we are when we have a team of family, friends, and supporters who work hard in helping us to be successful in our campaigns. First and foremost, I would like to thank you, the constituents of this new Ward Four, for once again elected me as your representative on City Council. I am both humbled and honored that you have placed in me your trust and confidence to work with this council to continue to move this city forward. So whether you were previously in Ward Four, or previously in Ward Five or Ward Six, and now in Ward Four, thank you very much for your support. I would like to take this opportunity to especially thank my wife Pauline, my daughter Erica and her husband Dale, my daughter Andrea, and my son Richard and his wife Vicky for all the work that they did and support that they provided during this election campaign. And councillor Bruni, you know when you're getting old, when you have grandchildren that can help in your campaign. So as well, I want to acknowledge that my grandchildren, all five here, Reese, Kaylee, Madison, James, and Maisie, have all attended tonight. I'm very proud that I could see them here. A special thank you to all my family and friends who delivered flyers, maintained signs, and scrutineered on election night. It was very much appreciated, and I want to thank my sister Silvana, her husband Ronda Mario, for attending tonight. It was nice to see you here. Ladies and gentlemen, a common theme from candidates during this last election was diversity and growth for this community, value for our tax dollars, efficiency in our operations, and embellishments to our quality of life. During council's last term, we started two important initiatives that I believe are very important in addressing those themes and moving our community forward. The mayor alluded to both of them in his opening remarks. One was future Susie Marie, and the other was the Downtown Revitalization Plan. Both these initiatives are well underway, and I believe we need to continue supporting these initiatives if our community is to reap the benefits from the work that the many people are putting into them. Over the last terms, both terms, one of my ward and city-at-large goals was related to our property standards and yard maintenance bylaws. Both these bylaws were reviewed, restructured, and we asked our staff to be more aggressive in their inspections and follow-up actions. Based on the calls I received that are related to these bylaws and some of the conversations from the door-to-door part of my election campaign, there continues to be a concern that is much too common. That concern is the amount of time required to get compliance once an order has been written up. Couple of weeks ago, I met with Mr. Verre, Mr. Pozbon, and Mr. Bertrand to discuss some possible solutions. As a result of those- As a result of those discussions, I've drafted a resolution to hopefully address this concern, and I have submitted it to our city clerk. In closing, ladies and gentlemen, let me say this: The mayor alone, no one councillor, on their own, can affect change. It will only happen if all of council, along with staff, and along with the community, work together. I look forward to working with Counselor Bruni in representing Ward Four for the next four years, and I look forward to a very successful term. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Nero. Counsel Hollingsworth?
Thank you. I also want to congratulate you on your worship, also our city clerk, Malcolm, for all your hard work and your staff putting the election together, and also Mr. Horseman for all your guidance. All three of you are great leaders as well. First, I also want to extend my thank you to everyone in this gallery and also those people watching at home for participating in this special evening. At this time, I want to congratulate our new partners around this table. Congratulations to our new councillors. These new councillors, I know, and I already do know this, bring a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of life experience, to the table. And no doubt, you have many new ideas. I strongly feel each of you will bolt out of the gate with enthusiasm and passion. Honestly, because I know you have been involved with this community for not just the last year, but for many years. You may be more than you realize, you may be more than you realize, ready for this very important role on council. Your learning curve, I think, would be quite short because of your own personal experience. At this time, I also want to say thank you to my constituents in Ward Two, who I served for the last two and a half years. And I also want to say thank you to Ward One constituents, who are entrusting me to move forward, to make sure that I represent you properly. But most of all, yes, we are Ward Base, but most of all, we do represent the whole entire community. And I thank everyone that trusts me, that have provided me guidance through my election, but also in my previous term. As council, we need to keep in mind that City Hall is for you. It's not for me personally, it's not for my personal agenda, but it's all for you, our community. I conceive you as our client. The previous council enjoyed many successes. Those were already outlined by our mayor and other councillors up to this point. However, we still have a lot of work to do. That is reality. I feel we need to do a little bit better job in communicating, communicating our successes as we move forward, but also our potential changes. We need to do better in going out to the public. Up to this point, we have had many town hall meetings here in this wonderful building, but we need to go out to the public. And with the previous council, our transit services did that, and they did an excellent job, but we still need to go out to John Road Centre, Station Mall, to the hockey games, and other public places, asking for your input, because this community is about you. You have the ideas just as much as everyone around this table. I also believe that we still continue need to remove barriers, some red tape for existing and new businesses that want to grow in our community. As Counsel Nero said, there's some lengthy processes, such as rezoning and so forth, and building permits that need to be readdressed. We need to tighten up our processes. We need to make sure that our community is open for business. We, as council, need to have the attitude, what can we do for you to make your business I want you, council, to be more open-minded, and they have been the past, and I know everyone around this table is very much open-minded to new ideas. Open-minded not just for business, but for culture and our history. Our art gallery, our own sewing house, Annabish Play Museum, and so forth, so forth, and the Golden Conservatory of Music. These are all wonderful organizations that contribute to our families, our seniors, and so forth. We must be open-minded and help them grow and strengthen. We need to embrace and trust our staff. Our staff are professionals, and I thank you for the last term for helping us, and I look forward to you sharing new ideas with us. I also want to say we need to trust our community leaders around this community. Community leaders from Algoma University, Sioux College, our public Catholic French school boards, our hospitals, our group house center, our unions, and so forth. All these are community leaders, and they also contribute a great deal day to day to the health and welfare of our community. Yes, we still have some inefficiencies in our community, we know that, but we are willing here, as I've heard, roll up our sleeves and to make our community better. I also look forward to having joint meetings with Sioux-St. Marie Michigan, our council friends over there. We can learn a lot from our own friends in Sioux Michigan, especially with the building of the new lock. Also, I want to say thank you, Mayor. You have done a wonderful job in reaching out to our Northern Ontario communities, our other mayors, and we need to do more of that. We need to lobby more for Northern Ontario to have one voice. And you have already demonstrated by going to Ottawa and other communities to say, this is Ontario, this is Northern Ontario, we have needs that are special to us. Hence, we need to lobby more at a higher provincial and federal level. But most of all, we need to engage our youth into solutions. I'd like to see some of our challenges in our city to be solved by our young, and they are able to. So the last point I would like to focus on and continue to focus on is that we need to be the voice that is not heard in this community. There's a lot of wonderful groups out there that are smaller, that need our special hand, that need our special attention, to name a few. The autism group, Leomass Cancer, and so forth. There's these small charities, not-for-profits, that need to be heard, and we need to stand up for them. Before I close, I do want to say I do worry for our youth, and I do also am very concerned about as our young grow. I am glad that we have a drug strategy team, and I am concerned that this particular group will need more support, and I'm there for them. Thank you to my family. My mother is here, sitting behind me. I miss my father. I wish my dad was here. I think my brother's got to be there for me personally, and I think my brother Bruce is for me as well. But most of all, I want to say thank you to Peter Dwyer, for mixing my other parents who have helped me with my campaign. Phil Vining, and I love him. My guardians, and my dad would be here too. He was a councillor in the past, but most of all, I just want to finish off by saying this is our community. We're all in this together, so you better be ready to give and share your ideas, because the love of Sioux-St. Marie, the love of community, this is all of us.
Counsel Dufour?
So I'd like to extend my most special thank you to both of you. Also, I'd like to extend a warm thank you to all of my family and friends, who tirelessly and continuously over the last four years have continued to stick with me, encourage me, and help me through both this campaign and two previous close losses. Thank you very much for all of your love and kindness and support. I wouldn't have been willing to stand forward a third time without all of the encouragement that I received from you. Finally, I would also like to take this opportunity to offer my sincere thanks to the voters of Ward Two. I am humbled and honored by the magnitude of the mandate that you gave me, and I want you to know that every single day over the next four years, that with honesty and integrity, I will be working hard for you. Thank you very much.
Counsel Gardi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Immediately, I'd like to thank all those residents in Ward Five who voted for me, and to those who didn't, I'm going to work hard over the course of the next couple of months to earn your trust. I'd like to extend my gratitude to those who lent their advice, their time, their energy, and their resources to my campaign. Specifically, I'd like to thank Kristen, Trevor, Joe, Don, Ashlyn, Val, Dan, and John. I'd like to say thank you to the Nelson and Skorn Yankee families for their support. I'd like to thank my brother Kale, my sister-in-law Paula, and my niece Santana, who popped into town a couple of times over the course of the campaign from Belle River, Ontario, to help me out. I appreciated it very much. To my mother, Gisella, to Adam, Megan, Ashley, and Krista, thank you for the patience you exercised with me over the course of a couple of few months and for all of your support. And to my 94-year-old grandmother, Alda, whose husband, my grandfather, Vic, spent a couple of terms serving in this chamber, I'd like her to know that I love her very And finally, posthumously, unfortunately, to my dad, Vic, for instilling in me to try to do whatever I wanted to, when I wanted to. Mr. Mayor, I'm excited by the next four years. I'm excited because I believe that the men and women elected to this council, along with all the municipal employees for the city of Sioux-St. Marie, are set to do some very good things, some very progressive and productive things, to set our community up for future success. Thank you very much.
Just want to note two things before Counsel Hill-Singer gets going. One has been much more than a few months of patience. That I should be the mayor of the community was Vic Gardi. I want to recognize that. Counsel Hill-Singer?
Good evening, everyone. This is going to take a little getting used to for me, because I'm not used to talking into a microphone, sitting down. It's usually always standing, so this will be fun. So now the hard work starts. This has been a long time coming for me. I've been encouraged by many people over the years, and one of the first was someone who became a dear friend to me, our former mayor, John Roswell. Either in a visit to his office, or one of those calls while he was driving, and those of you who had those calls from him while he was out driving, you know what I'm talking about, he would always take a moment to encourage me to consider serving our community in public office. And for a long time, I didn't think it was right for me, or I didn't think the timing made sense. But this year, I decided I was ready. I talked with many people about their ideas and concerns. I thought a lot, and I wrote a lot about my vision for our community. I was truly touched by those who directly expressed their support. People who said to me, "My family has talked about this, and we are voting for you." It got me every time, and as you can see, it still does. I take that trust very seriously. I look forward to working with you, Mr. Mayor, my fellow councillors, my wardmate Matthew, and all of the city staff. I will always listen and engage our residents. I know there is always a solution. We will be a growing Northern Ontario city. We are going to diversify our economy. We are going to build a city for the future, healthy, active, vibrant, and focusing on sustainable mobility. We are going to become the destination of choice for tourists and for those looking for the best quality of life for themselves and their families. We will have jobs for our youth. We will see our existing businesses grow and new ones come to join us here in Sioux-St. Marie. We will be innovative and entrepreneurial, and we will care for each and every member of this city. We have to be brave. We have to be bold, and we will be leading. Thank you to all of my friends and family who helped me get elected. It was a daunting task. And to the residents of Ward Three, thank you for believing in me, and I'll work hard in my seat at this table.
Counsel Vezel Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations. I've worked with Mayor Provinzano on various boards and initiatives, so I'm looking forward to four years with you, and I know that we will achieve some great things for our community. Mr. White and Mr. Horseman, I want to thank you both so much for your kindness, your openness. All of the staff that I've met have been, you know, any question, you need any help, don't hesitate. So it's been a really great welcoming as one of the five newbies to City Council. I have to thank my husband, Andrew, who's sitting down. He really is one of those quiet people that takes sort of being in the non-public eye. He's an expert at it. So Andrew, thank you so much. You didn't knock on doors with me, but you dealt with signs and all of that kind of stuff, and cooking, and cleaning, and laundry, and I really appreciate your support in me doing this. And I have three babies up in the galley as well, but they're 25, 15, and almost 14. So they're not making any noise right now, they're probably just wondering, when is the food going to come? I want to thank Sam, my oldest, who trudged out with me 6:00 AM after Election Day to get all the big signs, and Owen for helping drag all the signs into the basement, and for both Adam and Sam for coming door-knocking with me. It really was a family initiative, and I think for them, they're very supportive of their mother doing great work in the community and always have been, so I really am happy to be a positive influence on my three sons. So this has sort of been a very odd day for me, and I'm thinking about constantly where I came from and how I got to be in this spot. And I've spent a lot of time with my maternal grandmother. My grandmother, Mary Ellen, or Mary as she was known, was born Christmas Day, 1898, to Irish immigrants, and I grew up beside her on Pym Street. And I was a bit of a difficult child, you know, so I spent a lot of time with my grandmother. And she taught me the value of having people around the table. So Mary raised nine children in the Depression. She would clean houses during the day, and she would get clothes from the people that she cleaned for, and would sew and make clothes for her children. She loved a Dairy Queen Banana Split, that was her treat, but there was always a pot on the stove and people around her table, and everyone was always welcome at her table. She taught me humility, she taught me hard work, and she taught me that you should always have kindness for each other. And that's what I tried to do in my own home. When we did a kitchen rental, we've got a dining room table that can probably fit about, if you squeeze in... you squeeze in about 14 people, and there's always food around the table. And I'm looking forward to bringing that same ethic here around this table, because it's through collaboration, it's about being understanding to each other's needs, it's about realising that there are people in this community that need our help, and it's about moving forward and being positive as a group, and I'm very excited about the next four years. I would be a remiss if I didn't mention councillor Myers, who represented Ward Two for 12 years and was always a great supporter of me and some of the initiatives that I led. And she is in the audience, and I would like to have a round of applause for councillor Myers. And I want to thank Luke, my wardmate, for running, and the five other gentlemen that ran too. It is a daunting task, and there were seven of us in Ward Two. And I want to thank those supporters in Ward Two. I was a first-time candidate, so you don't always expect to be sitting in this chair. It's a great honour, and thank you very much, and I look forward to getting down to work with all of you for this community.
Councillor Scott.
Christian. I'd like to start out by thanking everybody that is here today and watching at home. I'm also going to start out by thanking my wife, Marina, who's here. She's had to deal with a lot over the past few months, me not being home, her coming door-to-door. There was a lot to expect, and she stood up and did more than what I would have ever asked her. So I'm very happy that she could be here and that she could see me in this seat. I'd also like to thank the others that ran, Corey specifically. You and I get along very well, I'm looking forward to the next four years. But also the other two that ran, because if I didn't think so highly of them as candidates, I wouldn't have tried as hard. So I think that they gave me the drive to show what this city needs, and specifically what Ward Five is looking for. I'd also like to thank my parents, my dad is here up there, and I'd like to thank my mom, who's watching from home, my in-laws, all sorts of people, everybody who, there's more people than I could even name that helped me out for this, putting signs together, coming door-to-door with me, helping me with my pamphlets, everything. It's countless amounts of people that I have to thank. I do know that in the past four years, I've been quite happy to see the steps that the city has taken, and I think that, given this council, in the next four years, we're going to continue to build on that. Very excited. I know the concerns for the people of Ward Five that they did make me aware of when going door-to-door, and I think that there's strong faith in myself and Mr. Gardi, and I think that they've chosen two of the best to represent them, and I think the next four years are going to be fantastic. I also want to thank Malcolm specifically, because I've probably sent you 15 emails in this time, and you replied to each one of them. I thought for sure you were just going to stop and say they went to junk mail. But no, you've been great, everybody. Christian, you've been fantastic, as well as Al. Every single person that I've mentioned has been fantastic, and I know the city is in good hands, and looking around this table, I know that we're destined to move forward. So thank you very much, and I'm excited to get to work.
Well, that's pretty good. That was quicker than I thought it was going to be. I think our experienced councillors can learn some lessons from our new councillors. Our experienced councillors can learn some lessons from our new councillors on brevity. So I want to recognise Piper Scott McGilvery, the Agoma Festival Choir, the Healing Lodge Singers and Sister Mary Salmon. I want to invite everybody to join us in the Russ Ramsay Room. We have a reception, and we certainly like everybody to spend some time together and friendship and fellowship. And I want to just reiterate something that a number of you said, which is that we have an exciting four years ahead of us. There's a lot to be proud of and positive about, and I look forward to them working with you and working with city staff. So, Mr. Clerk, if you can move the motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I have a motion by councillors Bruny and Christian. Resolve that council now adjourn.
All in favour? Carried.